Good evening, everybody. It is Thursday, April the 7th at 7:05. This is a committee of the whole meeting in chambers with me is councillors, borough mayor, Colonel and Abbott and virtually councillor Baines attending. CAO Rook, I've just promoted her. CAO DeJohn is with us as well. And there's, I see there's many people on the, in the gallery. It's a one purpose meeting and I will call the meeting to order. And before the adoption of the agenda again, which has got one purpose, nice to hear the delegate presentation. And of motion to accept the agenda as put forward, thank you, second all in favor, yes, thank you very much. And which will lead us into the presentation, just a second. And to that, I'd like to introduce our speaker. And that is Matthias Jacob. And, and just looking at this, his CV is very extensive. But I'll be quick because I wanted to start speaking right away is that he's a professional who's worked for 25 years on steep creek assessments. And, and he's an adjunct professor at UBC. So to our speaker, welcome Matthias and we'll give you the floor. You can unmute, unmute. There you go.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council for that kind invitation. It's a pleasure to be with you. And I'm here to talk about geo hazards, how they can be managed about risk and other issues. So without further ado, I would share my screen and start with the presentation. It says host disabled participants free sharing, so I think I need to be enabled. Okay, let me know when you can see my screen.
Yep, we're good.
Great, thank you. All right, I'll get right into it. So we have a specific objective here. And that is, we know that the due to its geographic situation on How Sound and on a steep slope, the village of Lions Bay is exposed to various geo hazards. They have been to a large extent categorized and mapped by others, specifically by Geoscientist in 2018, as well as some other studies, including a study by BGC Engineering on Baby Creek. And there are now a few guidelines for more detailed assessments for new development, as well as methods of mitigating risks in relation to those hazards. You, the village, has the authority and jurisdiction to determine the safety, be it the factor of safety or be it some other measure of safety to be achieved by such developments. And it is, I guess, your occupation to consider how to best make that determination. These concepts that are associated with risks are difficult and sometimes very complex. And in British Columbia, unlike in other places on earth, such as Switzerland or Hong Kong or Japan, they are still in their infancy and there's yet to be the risk tolerance threshold to be set by provincial or federal government. In addition to that, there is climate change and as I'm sure many of you will be well aware of, climate change has and is increasingly creating havoc globally in terms of geo hazard events, very well documented by, for example, reinsurance company. So in light of that, it is important that there is, there are certain standards that are being implemented, be it by local governments or be it by provincial or federal entities. Now, my talk will be a brief summary of the Codillaran Report from 2018, called the Natural Hazard Assessment Area. Talk a little bit about the DPA guidelines that were developed for Lions Bay. I'll specify the role of government as well as the association of engineers, professional engineers and geoscientists of British Columbia. And I'll touch on the 2022, right now still draft guidelines for landslide assessment in BC that have been completely rewritten from their earlier 2005 and 2010 versions. And I'll touch on what is really new about them and how it may affect Lions Bay. I will then talk about the impacts of climate change on geo hazards. And sum up with describing the importance of managing increasing risks via your legislative tools. I am not sure how we want to handle questions. You could either interrupt me while I talk, or I will postpone all the questions to the end and then I'll address them at that time. Either way, so here's an, yes?
Matthias, I suggest that you go on with what you're going to speak about. And then we pause and I'll look at the gallery and if somebody, they could put their hand up. If that's fine with council and with you, then we'll allow the gallery to be somewhat interactive on a, let's say every 10 minutes or 15 minutes, something like that, whenever you feel it's the right time for a break.
Yes, that would suit me very well. That way it's not a very lengthy solo sermon. Thank you, Mayor. This is an image that I stole, well, I took from Mr. Freely from the Codillaran Report. It's a very nice image based on Bear Earth LiDAR and it's an oblique shot right towards the community of Lions Bay that you can see towards the lower portions of the slope. How Sound is down here and view which you can just see A, just how steep the landscape is, which is no surprise to you. And the principal geo hazards. I myself am well familiar with the location out of professional and recreational reasons. I have worked on Bayview Creek a fair bit, but I also have many times climbed Mount Harvey and Magnesia Meadows by skis and otherwise. So I'm quite well versed with the lay of the land. The notable features are a large rock fall or rock slide that occurred at some point in the past, possibly against stagnant ice, evidenced by some of the rock mass having been arrested and a lot of the debris that one would expect, rock slide debris, apparently having been removed by glacial action when there was still a trunk glacier remaining in the valley. We also have a number of important steep creeks such as Harvey Creek here and those steep or Alberta Creek there. Those deep creeks are subject to debris flows, a very destructive process. And I'm sure you're all aware of the fatal series of landslide or debris flows that occurred in the early 1980s along How Sound, where bridges were washed out and people plunged to their death in the vehicles, not knowing that there was no more bridge. And also buildings being crushed at the bottom of these alluvial fans. Luckily, in the aftermath of these events, a fair bit of mitigation money was spent in order to create debris basin or in the case of Alberta Creek, a concrete flume was the intention of bringing the debris flows straight down into the ocean. On the right hand side is a shaded relief image in which the various slopes are indicated and that's a very quick look at those areas that are indeed steep. So for example, this particular area here, which is crosshatched again by Codillaran, is identical to this rock fall head scarab that you can see here. And it nicely shows the steep section of the watersheds and that is important, obviously, because the steeper the terrain, the more likely it is prone to various types of landslide hazards. I will not dwell a long time about coastal hazards or wildfire hazards principally because I'm not an expert in either. Suffice to say that given that Lions Bay is touching the ocean, there are certain coastal hazards associated with that, namely wave effects, primarily associated with storm surges, particularly if they occur at high tide, as well as possible tsunami hazards. And last not least, sea level rise that is associated with climate change, something that will not end anytime soon. At this point, we're pretty much locked into an ice free Greenland, which of course will make sea level rise, continue to rise into the future. You're all well aware that you're living in a forest and that forest, this is an image from Fort McMurray, but what we have witnessed as of late are an increase of forest fire hazards, not just throughout British Columbia, was the extreme fires of 2017, 2018, 2021, but also coastal forest. I myself had to witness that unfortunately, two years ago, when a slash fire in the upper Squamish Valley where I have my secondary residence, I got away and burned through the valley, burned down two properties. My family was evacuated, I stayed behind and the fire reached the property boundary, but did luckily not burn down my cabin. One thing of note is that BGC recently completed an assessment of the entire electoral area A in the metro Vancouver greater watershed. And this is just one cutout of it, in which we mapped landslide geo hazards throughout electoral A, electoral area A, which is of course adjoining the village of Lions Bay, but it was not meant to include the hazards of Lions Bay itself. This map of course is useful because it can be integrated in any geo hazard assessment that would be done for the village of Lions Bay, particularly given that it extends into the upper watersheds, not part of the village itself. It included landslide hazard as well as coastal and flood hazards that were mapped, not on a very small detailed scale, but at the entire electoral area A, which extends over large portions of the northern part of the metro Vancouver watershed.
Matthias, your, your microphone is fading in and out. I'm not sure if there's anything you can do at your end or not.
Okay, I'll, I'll, don't know that there's much to be done on my side. I don't have the greatest interviews in internet connection since I'm sequestered at my cabin right now with COVID, but I'll try to speak closer to the microphone, maybe that will help.
Thank you very much.
Do you hear most of it at least?
Yeah, we can hear you. It's just as Peter was saying, it fades. And it, it has the feel, and I know this is not the case, as if you're getting tired and it just, the voice just drops and then it comes back up.
Okay. I'll slurp on some coffee on the side, maybe that'll wake me up. I'll, I'll speak slowly and loudly and make sure that I'm not too much trailing at the end. So what are the key geo hazards affecting the area? Well, we've talked about the wildfire hazards and the coastal hazards, but the emphasis of this talk is certainly on the landslide hazards. There are landslides mostly, well, some of them are shallow. And when I say shallow, I mean landslides within depths of about a meter. When they detach, then they start flowing down the hillside as debris avalanches or debris slides, which you can see on the left hand side. Those particular landslides were quite ubiquitous during the November 14, 15 atmospheric rivers. They are rather difficult to predict where they initiate. The reason for that being is what actually triggers them, yes, is heavy rainfall or rain on snow. But the exact location may be associated with what we call macro pores, which is maybe some old root canals. It may be shallow bedrock underneath a soil layer that we don't know how deep it is. Or some other small scale topographic idiosyncrasy, very difficult to detect where they could initiate. But their tracks can certainly be mapped from old air photographs. And they are by and large not mitigated at Lions Bay. That would be extremely difficult to do unless one knew where exactly they would initiate and what tracks they would take. Another type of landslide is rock fall and rock slides. In my introductory slide, I showed this large cliff that had been identified by Codillaran. And these, this cliff, while perhaps not prone to create another rock slide of the size that had occurred, which was quite sizable, probably in the millions of cubic meters, it still has this a steep cliff and adverse geologic structure and it could lead to individual boulders detaching from that cliff. Those boulders, when they detach, they start to roll or to saltate, bounce, in other words, achieve quite high velocities as long as the slope is steep enough to sustain the velocity. They have no problem snapping off mature old growth trees along their path due to their high impact forces. And when they do reach a building, the impact is so great that they can go straight through buildings. So buildings, particularly in North America, are not designed at all to withstand impacts from falling or rolling boulders. Rock slides are somewhat larger than rock falls. When we talk about rock falls, we talk about individual blocks falling off. When we talk about slides, we're talking in the hundreds, possibly thousands of cubic meters detaching. And you can see one of those examples from a How Sound failure near Porto Bluff. Yeah, it's probably over 10 years ago now, where a larger segment of rock failed along a steeply dipping incline and covered the highway. And last not least, there the debris flows. In opposed to the shallow landslides, these debris avalanches or debris slides, debris flows follow known channels, known creeks. So we know roughly where they initiate. We certainly know where they flow. The difficulty lies in where do they spread out? As I said earlier, in the case of Lions Bay, the key debris flow carrying streams, the big ones have been mitigated. However, there's some smaller ones like Bayview that have not. The problem or the challenge with those debris flows is that many times in my career, as well as that of my colleague Pierre Freely or others, when we visit these sites to investigate, we hear that from old timers, old timers being people that have been there 20, 30, 40 years, nothing has ever happened, nothing will happen. But that's the problem that sometimes these events happen every 50 years or every 100 years and then surprise us. And that happens every year in British Columbia. Now, the consequences of debris avalanches, even relatively small ones, here we're talking about a slope that's no, no longer than 100 meters, can be quite dire. This is from the 2005 fatal landslide on Bearcley Drive in North Vancouver. And that was particularly tragic because there was this house on this bench that you can see in the middle of the image that was entirely destroyed, killing Ms. Cutner, a resident and maiming her husband in, in this building that had already been here by the time this photo was taken, removed. This was particularly tragic and there's a side story here because Mrs. Cutner was in 1972 in Hong Kong, when the apartment building in which she lived was also impacted by a landslide that actually killed quite a large number of people. She did survive, she moved to Hong Kong, only to then be killed by another landslide, some 30 years later. There is a reason though why this landslide occurred in this particular area. It wasn't an entirely natural failure. And that's something that is very important to point out in urban environments. This escarpment, the Berkeley escarpment along the Seymour River, as well as other escarpments throughout North Vancouver and, and other places, have had development at the top and at the bottom. And at the top, what happens a fair bit in urban areas is that roof drainage and property drainage gets directed directly to the edge of the escarpment and that lets, is being let flow down the escarpment, thereby saturating the fill slopes at the top, which of course increases the propensity of these landslides to occur. Not just that, but in many cases, particularly with older developments, the excavation from the homes were used to be placed as fill and to extend the property a little bit, thereby oversteepling this slope. And then later cuttings and lawn mowings and so on was, was added to it in layers after layers, years after years. And that oversteepling and changing of the drainage conditions of these slopes contributes or might in some cases have been the main cause of these landslides. These landslides are particularly dangerous because while they start to slide, they then quickly liquefy, so they lose all strength and really start to behave like a fluid rather than a coherent mass within seconds. And these fluids then accelerate very quickly and can travel not just to the bottom of the slope, but beyond the bottom of the slope. In this case, this landslide also impacted that home that you can see on the right hand side, crushing the backside of it where an infant was sleeping. Luckily, the parents were able to get to the infant and dragging it out and everybody was okay in this particular building. Maybe I'll pause right here and ask for questions. I think that's a good moment.
Thank you very much, Matthias. And before we begin, I'll make this statement once and it's a rare time that I have to do this. But relative to the gallery, I think you see how we operate in our council. For the gallery and those who are speaking, I expect respect and decorum to be front of mind when you're addressing our guests, staff or council. And failure to do so will result in your participation ending abruptly. With that happy welcoming invitation to our gallery, I would welcome anybody if they wish to unmute again and ask a question. You don't have to turn your camera on.
I thought that the questions were for council.
Sorry, I thought we were doing multiple here.
I think the public questions and comments should probably come at the end.
I think we're going to do interactive.
I thought that was with council, but it's up to you.
Well, let's just start this, all right. Will the gallery hold? Councillors, any questions?
Not so far. So far, I'm good.
One question, there was a comment about tsunami potential. I, I'd just like to know.
What?
It was briefly touched on when you were talking about the sea level rise, et cetera, but tsunami is rather unlikely, but I'd just like to hear a little bit more about that, please.
Sure, so there's different types of tsunami. There's landslide genetic tsunamis. And so those are tsunamis that are generated by a large volume of rock impacting a body of water, be that a reservoir or in this case How Sound. And that big splash creates a large displacement wave, a bore that then travels possibly over larger distances impacting shorelines. There have been many very destructive such landslide born tsunamis along the coast of British Columbia. However, along How Sound, in surveys, bathymetric surveys, no remarkable landslide or rock avalanche deposits have been found, to the best of my knowledge, except from one on Bowen Island, on the, I believe it's the north side of Bowen Island. So I think the landslide genetic tsunami hazard is relatively low for How Sound. Of course, it being on the ocean and not too far away from the main subduction zone west of Vancouver Island. We know there is a significant tsunami hazard, not just from that subduction zone, but also from others around the Pacific Ring of Fire, Japan, Alaska and elsewhere. The good news is that we are largely sheltered from very large tsunami by Vancouver Island itself. So the tsunami that comes across the ocean, be it from a distant source, Alaska or Japan, or from the subduction zone west of Vancouver Island, which is closer 100 to 200 kilometers, would have to travel through the Strait of Georgia and then up and into How Sound. Now, I myself am not a tsunami, a earthquake tsunami specialist. So I can tell you what the tsunami run up is in the area of Lions Bay. But tsunamis certainly have and certainly will reach the shores of How Sound. I just have no data to tell you exactly how high the run up would be. And of course, it depends strongly on whether that were to occur at low tide or high tide.
Thank you. Thank you, your friend, councillor Collins. Mrs. Simons, if you've got a question, please, again, you don't have to do the camera, but you're on it, you're live.
Hi, yeah, I have a question, well, a comment as well. And just as a note, during the Wood Fiber LNG environmental assessment, there was a tsunami study done for How Sound. So that's a place that could be referenced for that information. But I had a question about, at the beginning of the presentation, you said that the province has not set any risk tolerance benchmarks or something to that effect. You also said that the, there's a new flood, flood conditions reporter or studies. And so anyway, Mike, what I'm getting at is I'm really curious as to if you, and this might be outside yours, but what you're hearing about insurance. Because of course insurers look, they have their own benchmarks for risk assessment. If that, if it's not studied at all, if that's looked at.
Yes, you're, so to the first part of your question, yes, the province nor the federal government have agreed to or published any risk tolerance thresholds, neither for loss of life nor for economic losses. And you're very correct in that insurance companies, out of monetary reasons of course, have very much done so. In how far, which insurance company has what thresholds that they use to determine their premiums through their underwriters that I am not aware of. There's of course many insurance companies and then there's reinsurance companies, those who insure the insurance companies. And they probably have all their various thresholds. They, they are also quite morbid in a sense that they monetize human life, which in Canada is valued at five to 10 million dollars per person. And that's all I know as far as insurance companies go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simons, and I don't see anybody else. So Matthias, if you want to yourself and continue, that'd be great.
Sure, I will. Thank you, Mayor. So I'll touch on a few aspects of the Codillaran Report, if my computer allows me to forward. Hang on, I might just have to escape here quickly. Okay. It has agreed. So the objective of the Codillaran Report that was written, written by Mr. Freely was to review geo hazards affecting the village and to create a natural hazards assessment area, planning framework to provide a consistent basis for managing geo risk. And that is really important to have this basis. From my own experience, working throughout British Columbia and elsewhere in the world, I come across cases, and now I'm referring to BC specifically because that's relevant, where I do shake my head why a particular development, particularly new developments, has been placed in areas that are obviously subject to major geo hazards. And when I then query the jurisdiction or the local approval officer to find out how this particular subdivision could have been permitted in absence of any mitigation, I, I most often learn that there was no triggering mechanism. In other words, In other words, the permit application came in and certain environmental and other assessments had to be done, but there was nothing that flagged it to become subject to geotechnical hazard assessments. And that's really where these kind of things like a N H A A that you issued is so important because it allows the triggering of a hazard assessment, should there be a development permit application, redevelopment or otherwise. The legislative tools in the D P's are in accordance with the guidelines for, for those D P As. Now, I read through the Codillan Report and it is certainly thorough and at an appropriate level of detail. Mr. Freely is a very well-known geoscience practitioner. And even though he doesn't work for a larger company, he has made a name of himself by not only doing good work, but also by publishing extensively on quaternary history. So you, you got the right guy for the job. He points out that a detailed hazard risk assessment are still required. So the, the assessment itself is not slated to a degree of detail that would allow you to approve or disapprove particular subdivisions or particularly building permit applications. That still needs to be done by qualified professionals. And I'll talk later about what I mean by qualified professionals. That's really a key, key item. The reason why I'm bringing that up is I do work for the, or volunteer for the Association of Geoscientists and Engineers as a reviewer when they receive complaints from third parties. And my job is to examine at an early stage whether the E G B C should launch a formal procedure against the individual that is against whom the complaint has been issued. And what I see through that work is sometimes quite amazing. In some cases, it's, yeah, it could have maybe done a little bit better and it's no big deal. But in other places, it's engineers that have never ever done any of these kind of assessments. And it's, it's quite shocking what has been written. The natural hazard assessment area is a profound basis for these Q Ps. It should never be interpreted by the Q Ps as something one glances it and then puts their stamp of approval on it. What is important of the outcome of a Codillan study is that given the location of Lions Bay on a steep slope, below even steeper slopes, that there are few sites that are not subject to any hazards. And that, that's an important realization, which means that for many redevelopments, specific studies ought to be done. Now I'll talk about risk tolerance decisions. And that's a topic that has been at the forefront, not only of my practice, but also much of my academic doings. It's a very important subject and it's not an important subject just in British Columbia, but many other jurisdictions worldwide have struggled with this and spent a lot of time thinking about that. Notably, perhaps at the forefront of that is Hong Kong, located in the very mountainous areas that also receives a ton of rain during their monsoon season. When we do risk assessments broadly, we differentiate between life loss risk on the one-hand side and economic risk on the other side. Life loss risk can further be subdivided group risk and individual risk. Group risk is the risk that an entire population is subject to from all various hazard scenarios that one can imagine. So one really looks at rockfall hazards, debris flow hazards, landslide hazards, all of them that could affect a certain group of people, for example, living on a fan or at the bottom of a steep cliff. And then all of these risks together are summed to understand what the total risk is that these people are subject to from landslides. Individual risk, however, is quite different. It is the probability of loss of life for one person. For example, if you have a house in which four people live, then the greatest risk is that person that spends most of the time in their house. That could be a stay-at-home dad, a stay-at-home mother, or an elderly person or an infant. And we typically calculate our risks for that individual that spends likely most of the time in their house. It is not proportional to the number of people or infrastructure at risk. So those are the two key risk metrics. Now, important though to point out that in some respects, we are blessed in British Columbia that there isn't, there aren't very many people dying by landslides compared to, say, traffic accidents or otherwise. However, there are some notable exceptions. And last November, we unfortunately lost five people in, on a landslide on the Duffy Lake Road. And one doesn't have to go very far. You, you have lost people in the early eighties in Lions Bay. And larger, more significant events have occurred, such as in 1921 in Britannia, when over 50 people died in a debris flood. Now, I will spare you the mathematical details of how to calculate these individual risks. But I thought I'll show you quickly these two cartoons because they do illustrate quite nicely how it is being done. So on the left-hand cartoon, you have a situation where you have a home at the top. So even a home at the top could be impacted if there's a landslide starting nearly beneath it. And then you have buildings at the bottom, which are typically more at risk because of the landslide runout, much like you've seen in the case of January 2005 on Berkeley Drive. What we need to know are a few variables. We need to know how often the hazard occurs, that's the P H. We need to know what is the likelihood that the landslide, if it occurs, reaches a home or another element at risk, that's the P S H. Then we need to understand, is this a vacation home where people go there a few times a year or only on weekends? Or is permanently occupied? That's the temporal probability or the P T S. Then we need to understand if the landslide were to impact a home, what is the chance that the person inside will be, or the people inside will be killed? That's the vulnerability. So you can imagine if there's ankle-deep muddy water reaching a home, that there is a negligible likelihood of a person dying in it. On the opposing side, if there is a boulder coming down the hill with 100 kilometers an hour and it's four by four meters, it will have an impact force that if it hits a home, the chance of a person dying inside the home is very close approaching one. We then multiply these factors together and that gives us a value that is called P D I, which stands for probability of death of an individual. It's a very morbid science, but it is one that has a fairly long tradition. And the advantage of doing these so-called quantitative risk assessment is indeed that one can calculate the risk and then compare them with accepted risk tolerance criteria, which is something that the village or any approving authority can and perhaps should decide on. Now, of course, landslides come in different sizes, at different frequency. As with most geophysical phenomena, the rarer an event, the larger it gets. A larger event can be more destructive, but it being rarer may result in the overall same risk. Nonetheless, we have to look at the various, the whole spectrum of scenarios and then sum the risk to understand what the total risk to a building is that's subject to landslide hazards. Now, there are a few jurisdictions in Canada that have formally adopted these risk tolerance thresholds, notably the District of North Vancouver, also the Cowichon Valley Regional District and the Town of Kenmore in Alberta. Other jurisdictions are using these thresholds in a sense that consultants like us calculate the risk. And then in absence of enshrined tolerance criteria, enshrined meaning through council decisions, they compare the noted P D I risk or group risk with thresholds that have been adopted by others, such as the D N V, the C V R D or the Town of Kenmore and say, given that these thresholds are exceeded or fall below, we declare this site either safe for the use intended or not. The safe for the use intended clause that is in the community charter and the Land Title Act is a bit of a thorn in our eyes as consultants because by itself, we are not the ones who declare what is safe and what is not safe. We are not the ones who define safety. However, we can compare to these thresholds and thereby defining what we mean by safety. Now, there is a long history in British Columbia of how these thresholds were arrived at, most notably on Rubble Creek. So that's when you drive from Squamish to Whistler, you come past Rubble Creek, coming down from what's called the barrier, a volcanic cliff, just below the Mount Garibaldi Volcanic Complex and Garibaldi Lake. And Judge Berger, at the time, made this ruling that a proposed subdivision that was already in construction could not be existing there because in his opinion, it didn't matter. Like his wording was, it doesn't matter to him whether it's every few years, every thousand years or every 10,000 years, the scale of impact, given that there's an entire subdivision, was too much to, that this subdivision should be allowed there. The Fraser, the District of Fraser Valley have, they have their own type of tolerance criteria. They are hazards, but the hazards are linked to different sizes of development to determine whether or not a particular subdivision or individual home subdivision can be permitted or not. So in that sense, it is quasi-risk because by linking the size of the development to the decision, there is the acknowledgement that the larger the development is, the greater is the risk for a particular landslide type, be they debris flows or rock avalanches to kill a large number of people. The District of Squamish has similar guidance. And that was triggered by the proposal to develop the Chikai Fan, which is a very large landform, primarily formed by catastrophic events from Adwell Peak and Dalton Dome, part of the Garibaldi Volcanic Complex. A fan that is probably the best studied fan in, in all of the Americas. Then there are other hazard criteria, like the 500-year return period event that was used widely through the nineties and into the 2000s by the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. And then the 2,500-year event has also a history through the National Building Code, for example, for earthquakes, but also has been used in previous guidelines as a guidelines, as a threshold towards which one could, should mitigate. The District of North Vancouver, after the fatal landslide of 2005, enshrined probability of death of an individual. And the table here below shows how they did it. One thing we discovered though is that this 1 in 100,000 threshold, that's a risk threshold and that's really the product of all these variables that I listed earlier, is actually quite difficult to achieve through mitigation or through setbacks of homes. And that's something that one ought to realize in a community like Lions Bay that is subject to a variety of hazards, that that application of that 1 in 100,000 might sterilize quite a lot of any new development. An alternative to that is given that.
Can you clarify the word sterilize?
Yes, meaning if, let's say, one were to show that a landslide hazard from a rockslide or a debris avalanche would create a risk well in, well above 1 in 100,000, a number then smaller than 100,000, it's a bit counterintuitive. And if that particular hazard is not cost-effective or simply impossible to mitigate against, which could be the case, then one could simply not develop that particular lot or those particular lots, thereby essentially saying that this particular part cannot be developed, period. That's what I mean with sterilize, sterilize for future development. That doesn't have to be the case. One, in some cases, one can determine that the particular hazard is mitigatable. Let's say if it's rockfall that is of a smaller size, of lower impact velocity, one could, for example, build a ditch and a berm or a dynamic debris net that would catch the boulders. However, for single lots, that may be a significant expenditure in the tens of percent of the lot value itself. And then they also use the standard factor of safety, that's F O S approach, for static, meaning for non-earthquake loading, and then they have others for earthquake loading. So there is a number of things one should keep in mind when one looks at these different thresholds. One important one is one needs to compare these landslide thresholds, the 1 in 10,000, with other everyday life loss risks. As an example, base jumpers, so those people in their Batman suits that jump off cliffs and then at some point open their parachutes, as they do from the Squamish chief and elsewhere, they have roughly a risk of dying in 1 in 50. That, of course, compares rather unfavorably to the risk of, of landslides of 1 in 10,000, for example. Motor vehicle hazard accidents have a risk, and something we do, all of us, almost every day, of 1 in 13,000. And that number has actually increased, meaning the risk has decreased over time, primarily due to safety features in vehicles. So years back, it was probably 1 in 5 or 1 in 6,000 and it has crept up over time, also with safer traffic and so on. And that's really an important number because the, this risk number of 1 in 13,000 is close to the 1 in 10,000, meaning this is a risk we typically accept on a daily basis. And we don't want other risks, auxiliary risks, such as landslides, to be much higher than that. If they are, then that means we are much more inclined to wanting to do something about it, meaning mitigate them. And then I have a few other comparative risks here, cardiovascular disease and cancer. Now, one important point here to make is that, that, that it really depends on how old you are. For example, the older you get, the higher the risk of catching cardiovascular disease or dying by one or cancer. And that is something that sometimes is being accounted for in risk assessment.
Sorry, could you explain for the ignorance versus what is a micro-mort? And how does that compare to a one in X number of thousand?
Yeah, a micro-mort, that's a good question. It comes out of the medical science. And it's just another way how to express 1 in 13,000 that equates to 130 micro-morts. A micro-mort is one thousandth of a death. Some people prefer expressing risk in a fraction, 1 in 13,000, I prefer that. Other people like to express it in micro-morts.
Okay, so cardiovascular disease one is 1 in 32,000?
1 in 32,000.
Thank you.
So I just noted that it really depends how old one is in terms of risk tolerance. So this is something I won't dwell on for very long, but just to understand how that works. So a child, say five to 14 years old, which is the pie chart in the bottom left, has a certain risk, but a rather low risk of dying through, be it suicide, motor vehicle accidents, homicide and so on and so forth. Relative to age, those risks change. It goes without saying, the older one gets, the larger the risk of dying of some disease. There isn't a lot of centarians around amongst us. That is important when one, for example, were to look at landslide risks to certain age groups. However, that said, that's really not something that is being applied in British Columbia because for a number of reasons, one being that it is very difficult morally speaking to justify exposing seniors to a higher risk for purely statistical reasons or not doing those for children. Nonetheless, it is something that is very true and should be kept in the back of the minds of those who do assessments. As an example, there, we were engaged in a debris flow in northern B C near McBride a few years back. And there was a lady that had lived in her house for over 50 years. She was in her mid eighties. She had a garden, her neighbors, and she really did not want to leave this location because we determined there is a 1 in 10,000 risk. And while it is not our decision, in this case, if one were to apply leniency, then that is a case where one should because her chance of dying of something else other than a landslide far exceeded the risk of dying by a landslide. Now, another important aspect is the return period that makes it into an assessment. So we as practitioners, we have to figure out, are we gonna just kick some rocks and look at what has happened in the last 50 years by maybe looking at a few air photographs? Or we're doing, say dendrochronology, tree ring dating to extend the record by maybe a couple hundred years? Or we start making trenches and doing radiocarbon dating? Or some other so-called cosmogenic dating to look even deeper into the past? And what these graphs here all show is that for different volume classes, and that's what the VC stands for in the bottom axis, the probability and thereby the risk changes significantly. If you look at the right-hand graph, that is a risk graph for different volume classes and the volume classes themselves are associated with different frequencies. As I've noted earlier, the rarer an event, the larger it is. That's the same for hurricanes, for earthquakes, windstorms and so on. In this particular case, one can see the spike in risk here on the third dot is in volume class three, which is 100 to 300 year event. And that's not counterintuitive at all. Really what's happening here is that this type of event is likely to kill people and thereby results in a much higher risk than a much larger event that may kill a few more people than this event. However, that larger event is so rare that it may result in a tolerable risk. We tackled, and when I say we, then this is myself and co-authors for the new EGBC guidelines, we tackled this problem by adjusting the level of effort that a practitioner has to engage in to the proposed subdivision. In other words, we found it to be unreasonable to ask a practitioner who's there for a single lot subdivision into two lots to ask to resolve a 10,000 year record. That would possibly be cost prohibitive to the owner and would result in a multi-hundred thousand or could result in a multi-hundred thousand dollar study. So we use this particular concept in the EGBC guidelines to come up with what we consider is a reasonable compromise between selecting return periods and coming up with associated with specific developments. I'll maybe go through this slide and then I'll pause, A to drink and B to maybe invite more questions. So there is a good question to ask and that is, okay, well, what if there is no risk tolerance threshold? And I should say right up front that most jurisdictions in British Columbia don't have one. Yes, they accept consultant reports that determine risk and compare it to published risk tolerance values, but they have not made it policy. Well, if there aren't risk tolerance thresholds, then the question is, well, how would the practitioner evaluate risk? I said before, yes, it could be through comparison with risk tolerance thresholds that have been developed elsewhere. But it is very important then that the practitioners use the same comparisons, which they're not necessarily bound to. So it could be that one practitioner is doing one study and compares it to a risk threshold somewhere else, somewhere in the world, and comes up with a very different result, meaning in this case they put their seal under a report that says it is safe for the use intended. Another practitioner uses a different risk tolerance threshold and would for the same very development come up with a dichotomous decision. Secondly, there is the problem, the legal problem itself, that if that were to occur, the scenario I just went through, that that could result in negligence claims for inappropriate, inconsistent or potentially conflicting reports. Our job is it, as I mentioned earlier, to define what we mean by safe. And if there isn't, there aren't any life loss risk tolerance criteria, then it is difficult because we have to resort to those developed elsewhere. Last but not least, having these tolerance criteria is very useful for the design, the appropriate design for mitigation works. If the thresholds are particularly low, then one may under-design in the opposite direction, one could over-design. And having these kind of risk tolerance threshold, the design of a mitigation measure can be custom tailored to exactly that threshold. So it allows those engineers who are tasked with mitigation to clearly define a design event that is hinging on the risk values identified and then do just that. That of course comes with a caveat, namely the available budget. Particularly what we find these days where we work with federal grant monies that are given to specific jurisdictions for global mitigation. We're not talking here site-specific mitigation, which is typically paid for by the owner. But in those cases, there is ceilings to the amount that can be applied for. And if the ceiling, let's say, is $5 million, then no matter what the risk value is, our job would then be to reduce risk to as much as possible, given the monetary value we have at our disposal, which is for the construction and the engineering. But again, at least it allows us then to clearly point out what the residual risk would be after such structure had been erected. And I'll just see what the next slide is. Yeah, that's a good stop, a good moment to stop and pause and.
Thank you very much. Mathias, councillors, any more questions?
I have a question in regards to Britannia Beach because there was a landslide, not only in 1921, but 1915 as well. And now they have developed Britannia Beach and are continually, continuing to develop it. What sort of mitigation have they put in place as a community?
Yeah, I can certainly talk to that because I was involved in, over various years in Britannia. And you're right, there was another one in 1915, which was in the upper at Jane Kemp, also fatal landslide. So as you know, there was a long push to develop on that fan, but it was very difficult because of the known hazards. So what the developer and their consultants proposed was twofold, or I should probably say threefold. Number one, various dams that had been erected during the time of the Anaconda Mine and thereafter that were in disrepair were removed, others that were in good shape were left. Secondly, a debris net, flexible debris net was spun in the canyon upstream of the fan apex with the idea primarily to capture organic debris. That is, has the propensity of locking up the channel and leading to avalions. Avalions being when the channel that jumps out of its bed and runs uncontrolled through the development. Thirdly, and perhaps most importantly, the development is built up on a pedestal, on a essentially on a high fill with the idea to A, give the creek itself a lot of room, more than what you can see right now when you drive over that bridge, and B, to assure that through building up the development, the creek stays in its bed until it reaches house. There's other measures then, namely that the foundation walls are pulled up. There is some caveats in terms of development on the first floor. It's okay for car space, not so okay for habitable floors. And last but not least, there is, I believe, an active landslide monitoring system in place in the upper Jane Creek watershed. This, that took a long time, was accompanied by a lot of numerical modeling to look at the different return period events. I think up to the 2,500 year return period event and even the 10,000 year return period event was considered. Landslides were numerically modeled on computers, landslide dam outbreak floods were modeled. And the layout of and mitigation measures of the proposed development were custom tailored according to these models and these risk tolerance criteria that I outlined. In absence of that, the Squamish Lelud Regional District would have not permitted this development.
Thank you very much. Interesting.
Councillors, any other questions or will Gallery have a chance to?
On the Gallery, opportunity here for a minute. If you'd like to come forward with another question, let's, on a Mathias's turn, please do so. Just raise your hand and I'll acknowledge you.
Do you have anything on your screen in terms of hands?
Okay, I'll fire it up. Let me in again. Let me in, I took out. That's okay.
If there are people just, I need to talk if they want to.
I don't, I'll put my screen on for a minute. Nobody? Okay, nobody?
I actually have a question.
Okay, sure.
Mathias, you talked a little bit about mitigation, engineering of certain types of mitigation. And I think you mentioned, you know, fortified foundations, zoning, regulations that restrict the habitability of certain, you know, floors or maybe it's just the east side of the building because it's the, you know, what would be facing the hazard or whatever. Are there other sort of, you know, short of the, I think most people probably jump to the image of a, of a big net across across a rock cliff or something like that, but there are numerous other, as I understand it, numerous other ways to mitigate risk when it comes to particularly individual dwelling units that are being constructed or redeveloped. Can you speak to a few more of what kinds of things that might entail?
Yes, very much. So there, one should differentiate a number of techniques to mitigate. One is warning systems that would be slated to avoid, to get people out of harm's way before the impact occurs. I'll just touch on those very briefly because while those may work to get people out of harm's way, they will still result in property damage. So it's a bit of a different situation and it's mostly used for existing development when a particular hazard is identified. And within those warning systems, we differentiate between advanced warning systems, namely those that rely on either weather forecasts or instrumentation right on the landslide that early detect acceleration of the landslide and then through various mechanisms and redundancies allow evacuation before the landslide occurs. And then there is real-time systems whereby a landslide that is already in motion triggers certain mechanisms to safeguard people. The real-time systems are typically not used, like if you think about Lions Bay, it would not make sense to have a real-time rockfall warning system that is triggered by geophones in the ground that notice vibrations, let's say, or tripwires. Because the time afforded between the detachment of a boulder and it slamming into the house would be far too short to allow evacuation. What they are used, being used for in various places on the earth is, for example, if a debris flow were to start and they detected in the upper watershed, then it, through signals, gates go and people, for example, can't use bridges. But that's that part. In terms of engineered measures, yes, one can be very creative there. So there are the global measures such as these debris basins that you have in Lions Bay, on Harvey Creek, Manisha Creek and of course others like Charles Creek and so on, or the Flum on Alberta Creek. But then one can become creative when it comes to protecting individual homes. And these individual homes can be protected, for example, by strong reinforcement of the upstream side of the house. Even so-called crash zones have been built. There's a house on Indian Arm, one of the brief flow fan where somebody wanted to build their dwelling in an area of known high hazard. And the owners, structural engineers were able to show that given the impact forces at this location from debris flows, that if they built this crash zone, much like a crash zone in a vehicle, that that would make the building safe. Another thing that's being done very often in the Alps, where I hail from, in the European Alps, to mitigate, for example, against snow avalanches, but also landslides or debris flows, is that a V is being built, a downslope facing V out of earth or concrete to deflect a landslide or snow avalanches around the building. So that is also possible. Against rockfall, one could landscape upstream of one's house a ditch and a berm. Of course, the ditch and berm need to be designed. This is not something that can just be done by a homeowner, homeowner willy-nilly because one has to determine how deep the ditch would need to be, how steep the berm and so on. Another facet is if the area is prone to, say, debris floods or debris flows at low impact force, that then there are caveats that you could not have a ground level occupation or that you have to have a foundation wall at least a meter tall, which ought to be reinforced and no entrance and egress from the upslope side of the building. There is entire books written on that subject. So we're certainly not bear of tools for mitigating against particular geo-hazards on a house-by-house basis.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sreetsky, you're unmuted. If you've got a question, please come forward.
Yes, hello Matthias. Interested to hear your opinions on the geology hazards in principle. Our area is somewhat different, as you realize, to others. And it sounds like you have a good understanding of location of Lions Bay. We had many assessments done through the decades here. One substantial efforts were put by Frank Bowman. You probably know him, he's a geologist from Squamish. Highly, highly recognized individual, unfortunately passed in a car accident. But he gave us a lot of information on our situation. You well pointed out that our biggest risk is a fire hazard and we know that well. Geological issues are minuscule to risks to that. And as you pointed out, we have a landslide potential issue, which is negligent in sense of Lions Bay, as we have hardly any soil to cause such an event. Rockfall, some boulders in the forest, but very limited. And we're so surrounded with a vast forest that we probably secure there. Our biggest risk always was from day one of development in Lions Bay was a debris flow. And we seem to have it under control. We spent a lot of expertise and money regulating two creeks. So we're relatively secure here. The big question in our case is the purpose of assessment. At this point is driven by a wishful thinking of land development, undesirable residence, however. The question to you would be, how realistic is to create a meaningful study for such a small community of five hundred forty homes in a financial budgets that we face? And most of all, should all residents have a say on it? For two reasons, one, studies of such generally look for a problem issues, not the positive things, and we analyze those. We have potential risk insurance for all our homes by creating a false or negative study, especially for the people around two main creeks in Lions Bay. Second issue is emotional and moral. We went through a terrible web debris flow, they destroyed one of the homes forty-five years ago, roughly. And for, that was all mitigated properly. However, for at least twenty years of more, Lions Bay was called landslide area by everybody on lower mainland and joked about and didn't do any good to residents. What is your opinion on who and who should decide of such a study to be publicized? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sreetsky. Did I pronounce that right?
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, yeah, there was a lot to unpack in that question. So one question, your earlier question was, how reasonable is it to do a landslide study for a community of four hundred, five hundred and forty dwellings, if I understood you correctly? Well, one such study has been done by Cordilleran Geoscience, which I thought was for a very reasonable budget. And in fact, I probably shouldn't say that out loud if my company here heard it. But we could not have done it for the value that you got out of Cordilleran. So I think that study in itself is already very useful in that it allows at a, at a client, at these maps that were generated to identify these hazards. Now, you mentioned that in comparison to wildfires, the risks of landslides are negligible. I would not be able to concur with that unless I had actually done a comparative study, which I'm not qualified to do because I really know, know very little about wildfires. Wildfires are dangerous, but they do, of course, also allow some degree of warning and vision, which is often not the case for rockfall. Now, when you look back at the history and you, you, you sound like you're an old timer, you've been there for a while in Lions Bay. You're right in that the sky isn't falling in Lions Bay every year. That's certainly not the case. And you're right, there's a lot of rock outcropping, the soils aren't particularly deep. That said, when we, if we imagined an atmospheric river like the one that struck the Fraser Valley and then went on to, over the Coquahala to Merritt and into Princeton. If the trajectory of such atmospheric river were such that it would have an direct impact of that part of house sound, then I think all bets are off. And I believe that it would not be unfathomable to see large landslides occurring in the area of landslide of Lions Bay from such extreme storms. So while I would love to say that Lions Bay has indeed negligible hazards, I would not be in a position right now to affirm that.
Thank you very much, Matthias. Thank you very much, Mr. Sreetsky. I've got the gallery on my screen. Anybody else have a question? No, Matthias, if you're ready to pause for a minute and then carry on, we'll listen to you.
Sure. So next, I'll talk a little bit about the roles and responsibilities of practitioners, the association and the various regulations. And often that's quite complicated, or it can be complicated. So I don't need to tell you, you're very well aware of that, that the village itself has a regulatory oversight and, and has, can make the decisions on risk tolerance. This, by the way, is fairly new. This decision on risk tolerance was something that remained within the provincial government until two thousand and three. And then was essentially, the onus was put on the districts and municipalities to manage their own risks. Which is extremely, which is very different, like, let's say, from Austria or Switzerland or Japan or elsewhere, where it is always the provincial or, or in the case of Austria or Switzerland, the federal government which sets the standards and not, certainly not the municipalities. The federal government has an important role, particularly these days where we have things like the National Disaster Mitigation Fund and the, its successor, the DMFAF, other fan funding mechanisms like the flood hazard, I don't even know what all the acronyms mean, and the UBCM grants that just came out. And those are important because the municipalities or regional districts can apply for those particular grants, depending what they are for. In some cases, they need to be shovel-ready designs, which means that the hazard and risk study has to be, had to be done. And at least an advanced conceptual design, if not a preliminary design, having completed in order to qualify for those grants. But they are very important because they do allow municipalities, particularly those with a low tax base, that could not afford any larger global mitigations, to tap into these grants and mitigate accordingly. Again, these are not for individual properties. These are for global mitigations in areas where substantial portions of a village or development are subject, existing development are subject to an intolerable risk. The provincial government has a number of duties. There is the Emergency Management BC, which primarily respond to disasters and then provide various mechanisms of disaster relief. Then there's the Ministry of Rural, of Natural Resources and Rural Development. I think their name is being recast right now. Once again, they have to look after forest harvesting, road deactivations and various land uses in the upper watersheds. Of course, the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure for roads and various other entities. Notably, there is currently a change in the Emergency Management Act that will be quite relevant. I have not seen those changes, so I can't speak to it. There's also various provincial guidelines that need to be considered, particularly by practitioners, but also in some cases by councils, on coastal flood hazards, on fan land use and various others guidelines that are existing. Some of them are, have a greater vintage than others. Then the professional association, primarily their influence is through professional practice guidelines, as well as looking at complaints against professional misconduct. For a practitioner to outright ignore those guidelines is hugely detrimental from a legal point of view. But also, those practitioners could quickly lose their license. So if you read a report done by a practitioner that does not quote or adhere to those guidelines, you should be rather cautious in, in, in accepting such studies, even though they may have the professional seal at the bottom. And then, of course, there's the consultants, like myself or Cordilleran, and there are many others qualified in the province, and they are tasked with those detailed assessments. Though this various interaction is important to understand and important in that sometimes the consultant can help a village that does not have the resources or expertise, for example, to identify global mitigation measures and help those governments, those local governments in applying for federal grant money or possibly provincial grant money for such global mitigation measures. So with that in mind, I'll, I'll just talk about these new guidelines. And there are some important changes to earlier versions. One of these changes, and I'm not going to lead you through all the fine print in there, but are the so-called level of effort tables. What was recognized in the past is that different practitioners asked to do the same job, let's say hypothetically, would come up with dramatically different results and dramatically different levels of effort. Somebody could do a report in five pages and the, the value might have been five thousand dollars. And another consultant would spend twenty-five thousand dollars on it for the same very assignment. And to fight that and create more consistency, we created these tables. And I'm one of the co-authors, as is Mr. Freely from Cordilleran and a number of others, which have been reviewed extensively by various review groups through the association. There was probably some twenty-plus individuals from academia, from consulting, from the various ministries that have gone through this in great detail. So this isn't just our, our wishful thinking. In essence, we have different classes on the left-hand columns from zero to three. Those are hinging or are attached to the type of development that is being sought. That could be simple renovations with a certain floor space increase, all the way down to large or very large subdivisions that we can see pop up. So a level three study, for example, would be like the Chikai Fan, where there's supposedly thousands of people put on a arguably hazardous landform. And that would trigger a study whose elements are listed in the next column. And just the fact that there is only five bullets in the lowermost class doesn't mean it's only five bullets, it means all of the above plus those five bullets. So those are very in-depth studies, typically not done by sole practitioners, but by teams of people with very different specialties. And therefore cost a lot more. The next column provides the key deliverables, what you as the authority, approving authority could expect. And the final last column says what return periods need to be considered. And that relates back to that graph I showed you earlier that showed that it is quite important to agree on what return periods need to be considered in order to make these studies comparable and to capture the entire risk spectrum that is associated with these events. Okay, so that's one important new aspect of these guidelines. Another one is, there's a fair bit of guidance on how to go about these studies. How to initiate a project, what level of effort is required, and what are the exact project objectives and scopes? So that the practitioner, that practitioner A couldn't do a back-of-the-envelope, truly back-of-the-envelope stability assessment and say, that's good enough. In conjunction with these levels of effort, it is now clear when a semi-quantitative risk assessment is appropriate, a quantitative one, be it life loss or be it economic loss, when a hazard-based approach might be appropriate and so on. So there's a lot of what I consider my colleagues' good guidance in there. Let's talk about the other metric for risk now, which is just as important as this PDI or probability of death. In this case, once again, we look at the total number of fatalities that could occur in a large landslide. The nineteen twenty-one or nineteen fifteen events in Britannia Beach would be a good example. Existing development, the Chikai River and the very large proposed development would be a good example for future development. What you see, and let's just look at the left-hand graph. It's quite a complicated graph to understand, but I'll try to simplify it as much as possible. Complicated because it really is a complex mathematical integration of a lot of numbers that come out of the analysis. On the bottom axis, you see in a logarithmic scale the number of fatalities that could occur. On the vertical axis, on the left-hand side, you see the cumulative frequency of fatalities. So in other words, you look at each scenario that you determine, say, a hundred-year event, a thousand-year event, a ten-thousand-year event. You figure out through computer modeling or very detailed field mapping, how many people could die in those particular events. You sum it all up and then you plot it on this graph. The graph is separated by a sloping line, the blue dashed line, which we call a reference line. And it separates two broad regions. One is the above one, the red one, is where there's an increasing benefit of risk reduction the further you go to the top right. In other words, if your risks plot into this red shaded area, then there is a very high chance of a risk that you may deem as intolerable or unacceptable. If, however, the risk as determined by your consultants plots into the green area, then there is very little benefit of risk reduction. And you may feel quite comfortable if it plots down there to approve the development as is. On the right-hand graph, it's the same graph again, but it just provides you with some examples. So the upper white curve shows an example that looks a lot like the Chikai analyses we did, for example. And there, it, it would show that there is a chance of maybe up to five hundred fatalities when you integrate all of the events that we could imagine. So for Lions Bay, that could be a rock avalanche that takes down the entire mountain. So for Lions Bay, that could be a rock avalanche that takes down the entire mountain. I'm not saying that that is a possibility at all, but that would be an analogy. In the second case, you have a curve that dips ever so slightly into the red area. And if this was a new development, then if it was an existing development, you would say, well, that's fine. They grandfather in there. If it was a new development, then you may wish to tell, make wish to make a decision that there is some residual risk that is too high for your liking and some mitigation or rezoning would be an appropriate measure to manage the risk. If however, and that's the lower curve, the risk were to plot down there for a new development, then you could approve it without any further ado. I think I should pause here for a minute and ask a question because this is a pretty complex system.
Counselors, are we good? Good.
Okay.
It's getting fairly thick here.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. We'll unthicken it.
Oh, that's a big help.
There's also a new way to map hazards. And this is with the thought in mind to homogenize hazard mapping throughout British Columbia. I'll spare you the detail. The only thing is for future studies, we strongly encourage that people use this kind of concept. And the concept is fairly simple. The coloration of on these maps are basically combining two factors, namely the impact force, which is a function of velocity and density and depth and the frequency of events. Similar maps exist elsewhere in the world. And the point is that somebody having doing a hazard map in Lions Bay and somebody doing a hazard map in Prince George, that green means green, yellow means yellow, and they are comparable, which has not been the case thus far. Composite hazard maps, and here's an example. They look like this. And each particular zone, which can be homogenized to make it more clearly, like this, means a certain thing. The red zone in this particular case means there is a high risk, in fact, an intolerably higher risk to existing development. This is a Nuluvial Fan near Fairmont Hot Springs. Orange means low chance of fatalities and a moderate chance and a low chance is symbolized by yellow. This is useful because it can be attached directly to land use decisions as per a table like this one, where each color means for existing development and further development applications, how or if a development could go ahead or not. This is just an example table. This is not a table that needs to be followed or must be followed by anybody, but it is a table that has made it into the new EGBC guidelines. And has been identified by some of our clients in the regional districts in the Cootenays and elsewhere as quite helpful because attaching these policy decisions directly to these maps is useful and in many cases will spare districts municipalities from actually issuing very onerous quantitative risk assessments.
Very good. Mathias, if I could get you a hold for a second, there's one from the gallery. Will I catch your breath for a second while Mrs. Simons comes on? If you could unmute Mrs. Simons and ask your question?
Yeah, thank you. The map, I think two slides back had, and I'd have to verify that that was actually a Lions Bay. The one before that or the one after that? I think the one after that. No, you had, oh, there, yeah. Is that the one on the right? No, that's a different, that's not here. I was just curious when I saw that about there was a watershed boundary on that map. So you're not, no, you're not showing, you're not showing here.
This is a fan on Cootney Lake called Cusco.
But this would be an example of maps available in British Columbia currently?
Yeah, there's some areas that have been mapped with this scheme. In the guidelines, this type of mapping has been relegated to a section called emerging practice. So it's an encouragement of practitioners to go that route. It is not a must. Cannot make the rules of you have to do this particular mapping scheme, but it is an effort by us to homogenize and standardize mapping throughout the province.
So the line that relates to the watershed, is that a layer that exists elsewhere already in other maps?
Not necessarily. Watersheds have been delineated for Lions Bay and in these, this day and age, with the tools we have at our disposal, they can be generated very quickly through G I, in GIS environments or drawn by hand. But again, over larger areas, they can be done very quickly, particularly with lighter information automatically.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pavel, if you'd like to unmute, will I grab really drink of water? You can ask your question.
Okay, just as a point of curiosity, in the places where these sorts of maps have been made and implemented within the community and are on the record, has there been any noticeable change in the insurance premiums for those areas? In other words, do the insurance companies have access to these hazard maps? Does it result in reassessing the risk for the community and for the residents there?
It's a good question. The short answer is I'm unaware of that because I don't deal with insurance companies through my work. You are correct in that most of these maps we generate for regional districts, well, all of them are placed on the websites of the regional districts, so they are available to the public. And there's public meetings, usually several, in which the public is informed through these maps. Now, of course, one major concern by the public is, as you mentioned, this is one thing, but loss in property value is another. You can imagine that if a map like that is displayed publicly and your home is located in the red zone, that that may affect property value. That is correct and possibly the case, although I have no data to look at assessed values before and after these maps have been generated. However, these maps also then serve as the basis for grant applications to justify that major mitigation is required for this particular place. In this case, the regional district of East Cootenays has been successful in securing $11 million to design and construct a mitigation mitigation measure, a debris flow berm and outlet structure and various auxiliary measures right at this location. That's in the design stage right now. The money is set aside and it will be built in the next couple of years. In absence of, in absence of these maps, it will be very difficult to apply for these grants because the grand funders will need to be convinced that mitigation measures are required. And in this case, they were convinced.
And when, when they are, when mitigation measures are proposed, okay, you said there's $11 million for this mitigation. What are, what are the sort of percentages in terms of that being effective? How much of that red area will be eliminated by the, by the mitigation measures that are being done?
That's a very good question and I don't think I have that map at my fingertips, but there is still a residual risk in this particular case. All the yellow zone disappears. Most of the orange zone disappears, most of the red zone disappears and some of the red zone turns into orange. So the, in this particular case, the residual risk or the risk after that $11 million structure is being built is very low. And that, of course, is the entire intention of that particular measure. And then there's other measures like I listed earlier in response to Peter John's questions of increased resiliency to individual homes that may still be exposed to some, some risk.
And finally, one, one additional follow-up in terms of, in terms of the grants, how robust is the funding for this, for these grants? Are these grants readily available or are these grants highly competitive in order to, in order to get them?
They are competitive and the grant funders look very much at what has been done. Has a hazard study been done for this area? Has a risk assessment been done? Has the risk assessment been economic and life loss? Has there been a mitigation option analysis been done that weighed, weighed and compared various mitigation options? Has a conceptual or even a preliminary design of the preferred mitigation option been done? So in other words, what is the package that you as a village or as the approving authority has put forward to the grant application? The better that package is put together, the more likely it is to receive the funding, particularly in cases where the tax bases are low and there is a recognition that the municipality could not fund these types of structures themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Reuter, your hand is up. If you'll unmute, you've got the floor.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Yeah, I appreciate the thoroughness and professionalism our guest is bringing to this meeting. My comment is to process. This topic, it seems to me, is one that contains information that of such a degree of complexity that one would have thought that residents would have been given more than ample notice of the meeting and have had access to the agenda. Yet both of these things have been eked out in teaspoonfuls onto the village website in only the last two days. I don't think this is acceptable, especially for a matter that three members of council present tonight declined to receive as a report back in 2018. And especially because this could have grave consequences for all property owners in Lions Bay. What is this going to do to our property values? Will our insurance rates skyrocket or even be canceled? What about the potentially inequitable way this might affect residents? I might apply for a permit for some work on my property, triggering the creation of a restrictive covenant against my title. I was looking at page 119, paragraph 9.5.19 of the agenda, where I stumbled into this, which might result in the degradation of my property's value and insurance hikes or cancellations, while my neighbors might not apply for permits for their improvements or don't make any, all of which creates a potential for an inequitable distribution of a series of enormous penalties and hardships within our community. I think that the consequences of this haven't been duly considered. And again, as to process, I feel that this matter has been brought to us in the dark of night. That's my comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reuter. And Mathias, we're not asking you to comment on that. So if you're ready to go, go now. I'm prepared to hang on for a second.
So sorry, Jim, just can we get back to Mathias for one second? The grants you discussed earlier, were those 100% grants or proportional grants? They, to the best of my knowledge, these were 100% grants. That said though, these are grants specific to the, they include the engineering and the construction of these barriers. The ownership of the barrier does not side with the federal or provincial government. The ownership of such structure lies within the regional district or the municipality. And that indeed is important because some of these structures require maintenance and the maintenance can be substantial. So the owner, the new owner of that structure, needs to set aside money for exactly that, for maintenance. And sometimes that maintenance is then levied through additional taxes, like the map you just saw for this particular fan at Fairmont Hot Springs meant a substantial increase in the tax base to afford the long-term maintenance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kijon?
Yeah, my, my comment to Mr. Reuter would simply be that this is not a situation of a particular proposal being advanced and in a way that council is being asked to make any decisions. This is strictly information and gathering as much information about the topic and because it's a, it's a very complex topic that has a lot of different avenues for exploration. There's a lot of different ways in which a local government can proceed or not proceed. And, and you know, there are, there are down the road things that the municipality does need to consider. And, and so in order to make the best and most informed decision, including having consultation on these kinds of things, we have to start somewhere. And so having Dr. Jacob come in and speak to council in this setting is intended to start the conversation, not end the conversation. And that's really the intent. It's, it's an educational exercise and a starting point for, for further discussion, of which I'm sure and sincerely hope at least that there will be lots to come.
Thank you very much. Mathias, back to you when you're ready.
All right. So now we'll talk about a subject that is close to my heart, not just through my practice, but I spend a fair bit of time with academics to work on that. I'll start with, and I hope that's not too far-fetched, but I'm just going to start with this slide, which I find quite illustrative. The, it shows how climate has changed over time and how climate will change over time. So currently we're around here on the right side of the graph. Looking back in time, and this is not a linear scale, we see that throughout human agricultural history, say the last 10,000 years, climate has been remarkably constant. Yes, there have been ups and downs. There has been the little ice age some 200 years ago that made it colder, but overall a very nice climate. If you go further back in time, the climate wasn't so nice to people, but they made it through as nomads. However, the point I'm trying to make is we've left the, the period of, of an amenable climate and we're going towards a climate that is going to resemble very much climates that existed long before there was humans on earth. The reason why I'm bringing this up is because all of us practitioners, we base our decisions on the past. So we take the past as a key to the future and the importance in that is, that is no longer valid. Climate has become extreme and will become much more extreme in the coming decades, possibly centuries, depending on whether we get rid of fossil fuels quickly or not. So that is an important recognition and I just want to highlight that. In my life, I was born in 1966, the carbon dioxide concentration was roughly 320 parts per million, which is already 60 parts per million higher than the pre-industrial limit. Now we're at 420. So in my measly life, the carbon dioxide concentration is increased by 100 parts per million and that has manifested itself in a dramatic increase in global temperatures, whereas in the last 10 years, having had eight of the warmest years ever measured on the earth. So climate change is not something that we need to worry about in the future. It is already here. And the Harbingers have been prominently visualized by A, the extreme heat wave with the almost 50 degrees and litton and B, by the extreme storm that hit us on November 14th and 15th. This tendency can also be shown in looking at the number of geophysical loss events. Geophysical loss, this includes floods. Geophysical loss, this includes floods, windstorms, including hurricanes, tornadoes, as well as earthquakes and others. Earthquakes, of course, realizing have nothing to do with climate change. However, there is a quite steady increase over the last 15 years or so. And that's not entirely due to densification of development in places where there should perhaps be no development or less so. But it is clearly associated with intensification of these damaging geophysical phenomena. This is a statistics put together by the Munich Reinsurance Company, which is the world's largest. However, if we look at the number of deaths, that has actually declined, although there is various studies that predict this to go back up. But the main message here is that hazard recognition, warning systems and engineering line has lowered the number of people that die per decade substantially. Now, what is important to realize is that with these future climates, we will see, and that's not a question of if, we will see more events like that November 14, 15 storm and its direct impacts. This is this very large landslide near Agassi that started as a rockslide, but then fluidized and led to these vehicles being trapped along the highway for days on end. Now, the effects of climate change are manifold as it comes to geo hazards. More precipitation means more landslides. It also means faster snowmelt, wetter snowpacks, more entrapment along the path and possibly larger landslides. One of the culprits are these dreaded atmospheric rivers. And here you see a satellite image in the top of one in 2017 that started actually as a typhoon off the coast of the Philippines and then shoveled like a conveyor belt these very moist tropical air masses into our latitudes. As it approaches the Cordilleran mountain range, it is being forced upwards. The upward forcing causes condensation of the moisture and therefore an intensification of rainfall or snow. However, with these tropical or subtropical air masses, the precipitation is largely as rain because the freezing level is often forced up even over 3,000 meters elevation. Various groups in North America have looked at how these atmospheric rivers have changed in the past and may change in the future. This is a graph of a model looking forward of how these atmospheric rivers could affect the west coast of North America. And what it shows on the right hand graph is that all these different climate models that have been used show essentially the same story, namely that in the later part of this century, we will see an intensification of these atmospheric rivers. Very recent model by Environment Canada and Climate Change has forged specifically British Columbia, in this case, this is Vancouver Airport, has shown the same. In fact, that there will be many more of these storms, but also their duration will be longer. We can only fathom how catastrophic, how even more catastrophic the events of November 14, 15 had been had this atmospheric river lingered for another two days. And in this graph, the red bubbles are the so-called category five storms. What does that mean in terms of precipitation intensity? Well, a number of studies have been done there. And again, here, we can't see the future as particularly friendly. The analyses, and this has been done on half a year of running supercomputers at the National Centre of Atmospheric Research in Boulder, Colorado. And it resulted in showing that for us, for our area here, by the end of the century, we can expect a quintupling of extreme hourly rainfall associated with an increase of 20 to 30% in its magnitude. So once again, both the frequency of extreme rainfall and the respective magnitude will increase. And in unison, of course, that will result in more landslides and floods and various other geophysical phenomena. At the same time, due to the warming, we will see more extended droughts, which will make our forests more susceptible to wildfires. And again, in 2017, 18 and 21, we've seen exactly that already manifesting.
So the public sees we're seeing it differently.
This is a heavily burned watershed along the Nickomen River near north of Litten, affected by the Litten Fire. And what we see here is the aftermath of a rather moderate rainstorm that occurred after that wildfire. All these little streaks that are accentuated with the red color are erosional features, which then united and became a very large debris flow, which destroyed bridges and threatened homes. In a recent study that was led by myself and colleagues, we actually tried to quantify for the North Shore Mountains for the different climate scenarios, just how much the change in rainfall intensity and duration and antecedent moisture condition would manifest itself in changes to landslide activity. And again, I'll spare you the details. Suffice to say that we're looking at a multi-hundred percent increase in landslide frequency and a substantial increase in landslide magnitude, meaning larger landslides. Now that is a regional study and we have to be very careful in applying that to individual creeks or individual landslide sites. In some cases, an increase in the frequency or the probability of landslide may actually cause a decrease in its volume, particularly in those areas that are limited by the amount of sediment that there is. You can imagine if a creek system has only a certain amount of sediment, if it's removed by a debris flow and then slowly has to recharge over time. If there's multiple hydroclimatic events that cause the debris flow, the debris flow itself will become smaller. Now, with these wildfires and these so-called omega situations, where you have a stagnant high pressure cell that creates these heat domes, we can expect this risk of wildfires and the proportional risk of wildfire-generated landslides, particularly in the two years after these landslides occur, to increase. We can actually quantify that increase. And again, here you're looking at this group risk curve, in this case of a creek near Pemberton. And the black solid line at the top is the current risk profile. And the red line superimposed here is the risk under a changing climate. So we're at a stage now where we can actually take the knowledge of how landslide activity will change in the future and integrate it into our risk assessments. So what does that mean for the village of Lions Bay? Well, there is no question it will get much hotter and drier in the summer. We're currently on a path of three degrees Celsius increase in average temperatures for southwestern British Columbia by the end of the century. While three degrees doesn't sound like much, it gets us well beyond any climate in human history for this part of the world. We will see substantially increases of rainfall in the winter, rising snow levels. In fact, we did a climate change assessment for the municipality of Whistler recently and we showed the changes in snow, various ski resorts in North America. And there's little question that grouse Cypress Mountain and Seymour will have no winters by mid-century or will probably have to shut down their operations due to lack of snow and mostly rain as the zero degree isotherm moves higher than is good for those ski areas. Whistler Mountain will hang in for a little longer, but probably not much beyond the end of the century. In terms of ski sports, we will see more landslides, possibly larger landslides, with the caveat that I mentioned earlier, that in specific creeks that are sediment supply limited, the volume or the magnitude of those debris flows would actually decline. Overall, it really means for coastal British Columbia that we will have to look at enhanced geo hazard and geo hazard risks, even in absence of any development densification. The densification, of course, increasing the risk just by putting more people at in harm. There are, maybe I'll just finish that and then we can have more questions at the end. There are some particular risk management challenges. And one of those I'd like to point out because they are relevant and they actually, this particular example leads to some of the questions that were asked earlier. In late 2021, Jason Creek, which is near Pemberton, experienced some events, namely floods and debris flows, that led to evacuations. Emergency repairs were done and various consultants, Frontera and Data Cordilleran, went and did emergency assessments after these atmospheric rivers moved through the area. People were evacuated, culprits were installed. Evacuation order for some areas, some properties was rescinded. Another assessment was issued and an evacuation order was instituted for other properties. Some of the residents in this area are still evacuated from the December events. And they will stay, will need to stay outside their properties until such time as a detailed study has been completed that is able to show that the risk to these properties can be regarded as tolerable. And if it is not, that that requires mitigation, be it onsite, as we discussed earlier, or be it global mitigation that would help anybody and everybody that is currently living on this particular landform. In this particular case, it is important to highlight that having these risk tolerance thresholds is important because they allow us to make that all important comparison. Having these composite hazard maps is equally important because we heard from some residents that they would have not bought in this area had they known that they could be subject to these hazards. And these composite hazard maps or other hazard maps are so very important to A, trigger the types of studies, detailed studies that are necessary to clarify what needs to be done for specific properties, be it proposed or be it existing properties. And secondly, to support funding applications, as I've explained earlier. And that is really why having a DPA, why having this assessment that Cordilleran did is so important to, as a stepping stone, to allow for these types of studies and to avoid getting people into these situations where they might be evacuated and then there is no mechanism in place to get them back into their homes. This is just an example of the evacuation alerts. An orange on the left side in December. And then after Cordilleran assessment, where the, in the green areas where the evacuation alerts were rescinded and those alerts were maintained and orders were maintained. This, of course, as you can imagine, is highly stressful for the residents in questions. They have not been in their homes or some of them have not been in their homes for a long time. They live in hotels and they don't know when and if they can go back to their homes. And in this case, once the, once we do a detailed study, we can then look at various active measures or passive measures and come up with solutions that would allow people to go back and or develop or redevelop. So just to sum up then, and then I'm really done. Thank you very much for your patience, by the way. Local governments, in our experience, really need to find effective means to understand these geo hazards and manage the risk. That is particularly important in this changing climate. And I cannot over emphasize enough just how dramatic the climate changes will manifest itself in the coming decades. These mechanisms through DPAs and NHAA's are an element in doing so defensively. Defining these hazard risk tolerance criteria is important and is encouraged. That can be done by leaning on others, as I believe the village has done with consultation with the District of North Vancouver. And it allows them to custom tailor their own, with of course, some justification, hopefully. It is important that you interact with your future qualified professionals that do assessments, that they fully understand where the municipality sits, that they understand the EPAs and/or risk tolerance criteria that you may or may not wish to embark on. Best practices and standards exist. That is the obligation of the professional to be aware of those, read those and apply those appropriately to the assignments given to them. It is also important that you have a process in place. And I hear that time after time from regional districts and municipalities because they don't have the resources or the know-how in-house to understand whether a report meets the standard of practice or not, to have a process in place to have those reports reviewed by other parties. And then you could figure out who pays for that. It could be the owner, it could be some other mechanism. And with that, again, thank you for your patience and I'll invite more questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jacob. Councillors, questions? Good. Then we'll combine CEO, you're good for the moment? Good, thank you very much. Open it to the gallery if you've got a question. Please raise your hands so I can recognize you and unmute. You don't have to put your camera on if you choose not to. Mr. Simons, if you can unmute.
What would you, I guess this is just a general question. If already we're seeing erosion following extreme rain events in places, certain places around the village, is there like interim, like a more immediate measures that could be taken or should be taken? Because it's one thing to predict where flooding might happen or rockfall in the future, but where we're already seeing issues. Is that an indicator of, could that be used as an indicator for more to come?
Yeah, so as we've seen particularly in this fall, these atmospheric river came fast and furiously. And I am not aware of any specific issues in Lions Bay. But again, extreme events have always occurred. And just because we had one bad year doesn't necessarily mean we'll have years just like 2021 every year going forward. Climate doesn't work that way. There will be years of lesser activity and there will be years of more activity. But what really matters is the long term trend. Can something be done in the interim? Yes, if you have erosion issues that have resulted in, I presume nuisance damage, and my presumption is that because I haven't heard anything in the news that happened in Lions Bay. That, of course, can be mitigated, again, upon appropriate study by qualified professionals.
Coming to mind is actually that as we're driving along the highway, the risk factor is increasing, not just from car accidents, but from erosion on the, from the cliffs above us. We're seeing a lot of that happening more frequently, trees coming down, rockfall.
Yes, I mean, it is, it is the truth, particularly in central and northern B C in these areas with thick quaternary units and deep-seated landslides. Ministry of Transportation is currently thinking about perhaps abandoning entire road sections because in the last few years, they've had such an increase in landslide activity. And some of those roads. And some of those roads are cost prohibitive to repair. So there are early indications that things are getting worse. But again, one has to be careful in separating the signal and the noise. Uh, a few bad years doesn't quite mean it, it's going to be bad every year from now on.
Thank you very much. Uh, anybody else in the gallery have a question? Please come forward now. Uh, thank you. There appears to be none, Dr. Jacob. I'll just say, uh, on behalf of all of us, thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, and very informative, very helpful and very much appreciated. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
And, uh, for the gallery, uh, it's been a very interactive evening. But if you've got a last question or comment, uh, we consider this the last opportunity during public participation. Please unmute and come forward now. Uh, Mrs. Simons.
Me again. So, well, um, this was really interesting. I know it was to do with geo-hazards, but I'm curious, are you going to do a similar, uh, education session like this on sea level rise?
I, I have not been asked. And, uh, to be honest, you probably wouldn't want to go with me and consult with an expert that knows a lot more about sea level rise than I do and the various consequences.
And maybe that was a question for council.
Would be the question that has no answer at this time. But, but it's duly noted. Uh, anybody else in the gallery who should come forward during the participation piece? Please do so now. Okay, there appears to be nobody coming forward. Uh, so with that, I'll say thank you, uh, everyone for attending. And again, uh, Dr. Jacob, very informative. And, uh, your slides and your conversation and your interaction with our residents is very much appreciated. Counselor Barmer, can you put forward the motion to adjourn? Counselor Cunliffe, can you second that?
Thank you very much.
All those in favor, confirm by saying yes.
Yes.
Carrie, good night, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Jacob.
Good night.